All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call this Tuesday, August 8th meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order. We have one of our colleagues who is in transit, but we want to go ahead and get started since we have many of you that are already here. So we're going to begin with our roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Feumster?
President, here.
Trustee Frankel is delayed. Trustee Simon Holland?
Here.
I'm here. Trustee Mayor? Trustee Raymond?
Here.
And Trustee Taylor?
I'm here.
All right, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Then for our pledge of allegiance, we are, first of all, very honored to be hosted by our education partners, Truckee Meadows Community College. And we're going to, we have a special guest who's going to greet us shortly, but we're going to also have her lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So let's all stand. We'll join Dr. Hilgerson.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hilgerson. As you said, Trustee Frankel's on the way. She did like ideally went to the administration building and then drove like crazy and still got here with like 30 seconds to spare from me. So, but we'll go ahead and begin with our public comment. We know we have a special guest. Where's JJ to officially, okay, right there, ooh, in the back. Okay, go ahead, JJ, thank you.
Karen Higginson.
That's you. This is a public comment area. Thank you for being here, President Hilgerson. Yes, what's?
I think they originally set it up for back there, but...
Okay, no, please, stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
So, first of all, I'm Dr. Karen Hilgerson, president of Truckee Meadows Community College and for the record. So I just wanted to welcome you for meeting here today and enjoying this big airplane hangar of a student center. Our faculty will return in a couple of weeks and the students about a week after they return. So about the third week in August, this place will be very busy and much, much noisier than it is today. So you've caught us at a really good time. So Truckee Meadows Community College is a fantastic college with about 11,000 credit-seeking students annually and about 11,000 folks who are taking community learning or short-term training programs in the non-credit world. We're very proud to serve the Reno Sparks region and very, and I'm very humbled and honored and I continue to be appreciative that I'm the president of this fantastic college. We look forward to working with Washoe County School District and continuing our partnership, especially as it relates to the New Nevada Promise Scholarship. And my team had an expert meeting with Superintendent Davis and, and I think Kristen was there, right? I don't know if you guys remember, yes, it was a great meeting. And I think it's just a really terrific program that can help students in our region attend TMCC at no cost in terms of tuition. They will still need to buy books and, you know, they might need to pay for living, but this is a tuition-free program that can also be applied to students who do not qualify based on need. That's the big change here. They might have need and all the other, you know, sort of programs will be available to them, but if they don't qualify based on need, Nevada Promise will pay their tuition to TMCC. The other thing we're excited about is continuing to work with you closely and expand our dual credit offerings. This is very exciting. We have to raise the level of higher educational attainment for the citizens of Nevada. And TMCC, working with Washoe County School District, we can make this happen. So again, welcome and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting us. And for those of you that don't know, Dr. Karen, you weren't here, but your vice president was here. We were here a couple of days last week for, I mean, last week and then the week before for welcome back for administrators and for our new students, our new teachers at TMCC. So thank you very much. Let's give TMCC and Dr. Hilgerson a hand and wish a thank you for hosting us. We appreciate our partnership. Any other public comments, Ms. JJ?
We have an individual wishing to remain anonymous.
Okay, well, please welcome. I don't know if you can see the three-minute clock, but you're, you're routine, you have three minutes, just so you know.
Just letting you know.
Okay, I will.
I don't think it will leave you in a minute.
It's okay, we're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I'm speaking anonymously due to the pushback we survivors of domestic violence are getting from government. And I would like to take this time to remember the teacher in the Clark County School District who died last month from tuberculosis. And I would encourage this panel to continue reminding the teachers symptoms of tuberculosis. Oftentimes, summer vacation, these students go to areas where they can contract or are in contact with people with TB and they bring it back to the classroom. The, I was told that this cannot be put up on the overhead, so I'll have to read the statistics. The State of Nevada Department of Public Safety issues a report annually about crime in the state of Nevada. That one of the crimes that they detail is domestic violence. And this is Washoe County School District children who are in a violent environment. And usually it's due to a father. It's been found out statistically that fathers are usually the ones who abuse the children. And the Department of Public Safety breaks down how many of these Washoe County School District children and State of Nevada children have protection orders against their father. In 2011 and 2012, the Department of Public Safety reported that there were more EPOs and TPOs. Well, this is impossible. In order for a temporary protection order to be issued, a judge has to sign it. And in order for an EPO, which is an extended protection order, to be issued, a judge has to sign that. You cannot have an EPO without a TPO. So when the Department of Public Safety recorded more EPOs and TPOs, they were in error. In 2013, they corrected the statistics and there were about half as many EPOs, one minute, okay, half as many TPOs as EPOs issued. That meant that a child only had protection from their father for 30 days. In 2014, this was corrected by the judges. The children's TPOs were equal to the amount of EPOs. So that gave the child protection for up to a year. And in 2015, was that it?
No, no.
Okay. The judges went back to granting about half as many EPOs as TPOs. The point is this, the judiciary is putting Washoe County School District children at risk by only giving them 30 days reprieve from a violent father. And these fathers are now being allowed onto school campuses, they're being allowed into the classrooms, and there is the possibility that they could be endangering children. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Do we have any other public comment, JJ?
Darla Lee.
Lee? Welcome, Ms. Lee, right here. And I'll just give you a sign, a one-minute, one-minute sign and you'll, and you'll, I'll give you a sign when there's one, since you can't see the clock, okay?
I probably won't.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. Just speaking to the microphone.
Good afternoon. And I've talked with you folks before. It's concerning the Wild Creek Golf Course and my concern with a new high school being built there. I attended the meeting that you folks held up at the Ellen Bennett, I believe, Middle School a while back in the evening. And one of the main, at least to my knowledge and listening to it, the only real reason given for having a high school there was the ability for children to maintain their friends and their social groups, et cetera, all the way from grammar school through high school. And I thought about that and that would be, of course, maybe an ideal situation that schools could guarantee. I know when I was going through school and the small area that I grew up in, yes, we had several grammar schools, but then they all fed into a middle school and to a high school and that was it. So you did follow your friends throughout, but I'm afraid that is not the case in a big, a larger city and it certainly would not be the case here. So I am concerned that if that is the main reason for destroying Wild Creek Golf Course, then that is not a sufficient reason. If kids nowadays cannot learn to make new friends or cope with old friends leaving, whether it's out of state or to a different school, then there's something very wrong with the education system. Because number one, our children are supposed to be educated. It's not solely for their social life that the school, schools exist. It's for, I'm assuming, education. So again, I would just say that if, if that is the major reason for having Hug High and all of the kids that have been in, okay, in school thus far together to, you know, destroy Wild Creek, or at least a good portion of it, and especially with all the other negatives, I would highly encourage you and plead with you to please investigate Plan B, C, or whatever, because this is not the best location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. JJ?
Wesley Griffin.
Mr. Griffin, welcome. So I'll just give you the one-minute mark so you'll kind of have an idea of where we are. Thank you. Please be seated.
I too am here to speak in favor of saving Wild Creek. And how about, let's have a little fun. What is your favorite oxymoron? Is it maybe jumbo shrimp or act naturally or maybe military intelligence? Well, I've got one, I've got a phrase that many people today, I think, would consider an oxymoron, and it is ancient wisdom. Many people today think wisdom from the past is anything but wise. And the ancient wisdom I'd like to suggest that the board consider is from a poem called "The Rhyme of the Ancient Mariner." Probably many kids today never hear of that poem, but many of, maybe some of us today here would, would remember that poem. And very briefly, I guess it's one of the longest poems ever written, but very briefly, it's about a ancient mariner who gets stranded in a South Sea, Arctic Sea, I think it was. And it was about him and his crew is about to perish. And along comes an albatross who saves them. Later, the ancient mariner kills that albatross. And as a result of that, has to wear that albatross around his neck for the rest of his life. Well, I would suggest to you that if you, in conjunction with the RSCBA, kill Wild Creek, it's been around for 40 years, many people's memories are entwined with that. It's been a great service, is a great public treasure. But if you do that, as a result of that, the Washoe County School District, the RSCBA, and maybe even you are going to be sentenced to wearing an albatross around your neck because many people will never forget this, me being one of them. Not that I'm any big threat or anything, but this is a public treasure. It will not be replaced. It can't be replaced. And if you destroy it when it's not even necessary, there's plenty of other places to build a high school. You're killing something that's very, very valuable to our, our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. JJ?
George Lee.
Lee, sir, is it Lee?
Lee.
Lee, Lee, I got you. Welcome, Mr. Lee. Again, I'll give you the one-minute sign.
Okay, it's George Lee, but it's L-E-E.
Lee, I got you. Thank you so much.
Beeping?
Whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay. Can't even read my own name. Oh, I'm a personal unpaid lobbyist in Carson City. And I want to call on every animal rights green space in the Sierra Club about the use of green space or the destruction of green space to put in a controlled space, meaning the high school in Wild Creek. It doesn't just happen to be that particular project, but I see that there is a Plan B that's possible, and that would be to expand, seeing as how we are at TMCC, the TMCC high school here. If we're going to spend the huge amount of money that we're planning on spending, three times, at least three times what it costs to build the Monty, that we at least consider something like expanding the high school here. There are many advantages to expanding it, and that would be to increase graduation rates because of people seeing the things going on here, introduction classes, things that could be guiding people into going on to TMCC to get their degrees, more of a motivational thing, too. And that's completely overlooked. If somebody comes to a new spot, they don't know anybody, they don't know the buildings, they don't know how to get there, and they're, they're, it's apprehensive for them. So I think that it would be a, a big advantage to build it here, to expand what's already started here at this site. Besides that, this is about as centrally located as you can get with the area down to the west, the area in Golden Valley, the area in, down where, that means one finger?
That means one minute.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, it's okay, please, go ahead.
I don't, I don't recognize the signals. It really is centrally located and if we're going to spend all that money, we certainly could do it here. There wouldn't be anything stopping it here to be done. I assume that since the high school's already here, all these studies have been done as far as geological studies. And so it would be less of a hindrance to go ahead and, and look into the plans for building it here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. JJ?
Natha Anderson.
I'm sorry, I don't think, I didn't get, I see Natha.
Keep on saying, "Good morning." Good afternoon. My name is Natha Anderson and I'm proud to say I'm the president of the Washoe Education Association. We represent the nurses, teachers, librarians, deans, counselors, all sorts of other people. But really, I want, I'm here today to introduce our new executive director, Tom Staus. Elaine Lancaster has retired after working in both the Washoe County School District and also for WEA. She's been with the school district and WEA for almost 50 years. And Tom will do the job. I know he'll do a great job, so I just wanted this opportunity to introduce Tom to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Natha.
Welcome, Tom.
Members of the board, Superintendent Davis, grateful to be here and be introduced to you. Some of you I had known in the past and worked with, and I'm excited to be a part of the WEA. It's an organization that I have worked with when I was with Washoe County School District for many years that I admire. I'm also excited to be the executive director because it's been my experience in the past that this association's had a rich tradition of working with this board and working with administration and making sure that all of our students are successful and graduate. I'm also excited to work with the board and administrators as we continue to make sure that our educators have the best teaching conditions that they have. And I look forward to working with you and I look forward to working with your administration. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, on behalf of us from the board, we welcome you.
Thank you.
Mr. Staus, and look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you.
We like you too, Natha.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, JJ. Seeing that there's no other public comment?
Just a comment?
Just a comment in general?
Yeah.
Is, is that appropriate at this time or?
It's not really on the agenda, so if you, if the chair wants to entertain a comment, we just need to not have a discussion or anything about that.
No, it's not.
Okay, go, go ahead, Dr. Feumster.
No, I, I would just like to say how fortunate we are to have...
Mr. Staus.
I am honored. She's just so knowledgeable, great experience and great temperament, and I am so excited that you're on board. So congratulations and I think it's a great, great choice. So whoever was involved, thank you for the decision.
Thank you, Dr. Feumster. Moving on, on to the, on the agenda to Agenda Item 1.05. This is an action to adopt the agenda as submitted. I will make a note to my colleagues that Agenda Item 4.05 has been pulled at the request of Mr. Wambardo and myself. Otherwise, and I will entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda as amended.
It's been moved in second.
Like, Trustee Frankel, welcome back, by the way. Any discussion?
Which one item was pulled?
Agenda Item 4.05, Trustee Mayor.
It's the South, all the class members.
Other questions or discussion? Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Moving on now to board reports, Agenda Item Number Two. Let's see, we will start with, let's start with the vice president today, Vice President Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're not too.
It's been a busy time. We have had a lot going on, some of the things that I've done since we were last together. I attended with my colleague, Trustee Frankel, the NASB Legislative Update Conference and got all the, sorry?
You didn't wave that.
Were you there?
Yeah.
You didn't speak up. You didn't sit with us, you didn't acknowledge.
You ignored us.
Totally ignored us, Trustee Mayor.
Trustee Holland, will you mind opening your microphone?
Okay, I'm not sure what, what helps with this stuff. Maybe we'll try that.
A little better, thank you.
Attended with several colleagues the summer graduation here at TMCC, which was beautiful and very inspiring as they all are. Attended the new teacher kickoff here at TMCC and the administrator welcome and kickoff of the school here at TMCC. Also went to the North Star Academy Open House, which was just amazing. The turnout was incredible and really thank the staff there for doing a great job. Attended with President Taylor for a bit, the school district school naming committee meeting. And we had a great group working on that and I really appreciate the service of those volunteers. And then had the privilege to spend all day yesterday with Superintendent Davis and the team, from starting in the morning at the Nutrition Services Center for the preparation of 50,000 taco lunches. Just an amazing and impressive operation throughout the day. Really thank all of the schools that we attended and all of the schools throughout the district, all of the administrators and faculty that did a wonderful job welcoming our kids back for their school year. So thanks for letting me tag along with you, Superintendent Davis. That's all.
I wouldn't say kudos for getting here at 5:45 a.m. the way you represented the board.
That's right, took one for the team.
Took one for the team. Trustee Frankel, welcome back.
Thank you. Do I need to push anything?
Nope, it's a call. You stay on all the time.
I, I am glad to be back.
Doesn't sound like you.
We should catch up with you.
You should push something.
Want you to push something?
Well, you shouldn't have to push anything.
Okay. Here, use mine. We'll just use her. Okay, this is much better. Glad to be back. I wanted to also say thank you to Superintendent Davis and the team for letting me tag along for part of the first day of school events. I say that I was at Nutrition Services at 5:45, but I wasn't, didn't work until 7:00, so I was happy to be there. I do also want to just do a shout-out to all the students and the teachers and the way they try to make the environment so welcoming for their students. There was cheerleaders at Sparks High School announcing the arrival of students as well as the rest of us. It was really fun, a lot of great music to listen to and charge everybody up. But the thing I really appreciated at Smith Ridge was looking at some of the opening activities and the ways they were using technology and students were asked to develop a video to teach the rest of the class about the class rules and guidelines. And what a great way to have the children learn and also use technology. I was really impressed with the activity and the energy of the students and I saw that throughout this, so I was really excited about the start of a new year, a new school year. As Trustee Holland mentioned, I did attend the NASB Legislative Session. I know we have a lot of material that was provided to the rest of the trustees with great summary. We had a lot of ideas come out of that and they'd like to have ongoing reports to us here, which I think they'll make as a board report request at the end of the meeting today. But it was a great opportunity. I want to thank Don Emery and NASB for summarizing it as well as they have. And of course, we've had those summaries provided to us along the way by our own Lindsay Anderson, who reached out to me yesterday as well to talk about the good work that's being done currently being done. I think it's important for us to keep moving forward and recognizing all of the many things we're going to have to do in my legislative session, which is a lot ongoing, and so I look forward to future conversation about that.
Thank you, Trustee Frankel. Came back and hit the ground running. Back to Feumster.
I would just like to take a minute of thoughts you guys shared. I want to jump to the NASB Annual Conference. It was just very inspiring for the first time I've been on your agenda. We discussed superintendency evaluations across the state of Nevada and it was just amazing how they differ and it really guided me to understand that every district is different. I mean, imagine we cannot be compared to Gadsland, that would not make sense. And some of the stuff, obviously, me and I heard was sort of laughable, but again, it was unique to their areas and we expected that, but it was a great exchange of ideas. So we're supposed to get that information and thanks to Don, we got on the agenda. One of the other things we spoke about was the intention, well, we actually split the districts in Clark County's position. It was a real intense situation. And I was happy to be there because if we ever look at splitting our district, I would say, make sure that we tap into the source destruction, Clark County, and here with your point where right now we could just be going crazy and we don't, we're not doing that. So thank God. So I hope whoever is considering the possibility of splitting of Washoe County School District, I hope they will take the opportunity to go and talk to the people who are involved in the actual split of the district in Las Vegas. It is serious, it's agonizing, and it's painful, so just a piece of information there.
Thank you, Dr. Feumster. Trustee Mayor?
I'm Ash.
Trustee Mayor passes on today, although we know he, we have his presence at several events I've already been mentioning. Trustee Raymond, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm happy to be back, but did greatly appreciate the time I had with my family on vacation too. But since I've been back, I've had a little time to sleep in some events. Came here for the summer graduation last week, which was, really was wonderful and another example of how resilient our students are, to use the superintendent's words. You know, the 30 or so kids that walked across the stage that night put in a lot of time over the summer and probably missed out on a lot of fun things while they were, were working hard to, to graduate and that showed in their joy in their family spaces and in their pride in their own faces. So I was glad to be there. It was a great welcome back for me. And then the first day of school yesterday was awesome. I took my own daughter for her first day of third grade at Jesse Beck, which was lots of fun. She was very happy at the end of the day and tired, which is nice. And then met up with the team at Anderson Elementary School and, you know, I just add that I'm so grateful to the teachers and the principal, all the staff at the school who let us charge in and completely disrupt their day for those few minutes and, and, but it was really fun. It was great to see the kids and that was really special, too, the, to see the city show up and the mayor and some of the city council members. You know, it really was a good reminder about the connection that we all have to these schools. They're not just a place where the students learn, it's their community gathering place it's, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Raymond. Special thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I admire my colleagues for getting up so early to visit the church services.
No, colleague. Let's look the record to be exact, colleague.
I always have a tough time visiting that place because I always get so hungry. But yeah, it's an amazing facility. I definitely will go back soon. The reason I didn't also attend was because I also took my son to, he started second grade at Huntsville. So it was really nice to see all the students coming back and the parents taking pictures with their kids. I got to do that with my son until he kicked me out of the classroom if he wanted to go off to the playground. But it was great to see all the students are back. One thing I did do that I thought was interesting, besides the summer graduation, which was great, is I got to visit the school site where the new school in South Meadows is being built. It's about a 10-acre site and there's a lot of, a lot of work being done there, grading, getting it prepped and ready. it prepped and ready. Of course, beyond the school site, there's a home building, a wall over there, so very interesting to see that, and I look forward to visiting that site more and more as the building starts to become.
Thank you, clerk Kelly. And we've trustee Frankel got to that new site as well. One of the things I think that would be great is communication style. Rodney's having a really good job of reaching out to the trustees, or the school sites in their districts, to allow us to be acquired. I just think that's really cool. For us, again, I think TMCC has been my second home, or for many of us over these past couple... I can't believe I forgot to come here today. Probably because I've been here so much, right? And I know you did the same thing. But really, we've had, I really had a great time here, and certainly, it's always an honor to be here with the administrators, and as they get together, break into their sessions, and there's a special energy about the teachers when they're here, some are just starting their careers, some are trancing in from other districts, but just the energy around that was just, really was just fantastic. And of course, on the graduation, I just asked if we can get a number for how many kids actually graduated. We know about 30 or so walked that day, but there were more than actually graduated. I just think it's special to really celebrate all of them that did the hard work, the resiliency that they showed to get more across that stage. So hopefully we'll have that number, we can get it. On that graduation, I think Superintendent Davis did such a tremendous job with her talk, because she used words from a rapper that the kids knew and could really be a part of her talk, and I think that really helped them to stay engaged. And then Vice President Holland read the names and did a tremendous job. Did a great job reading those names and the statements from the kids. Yeah, that's a lot of pressure.
That was huge pressure.
That's a lot of pressure, but did a great job. Of course, North Star, it's always great to go there, and the school naming committee was fantastic. And I spent the afternoon part of the day yesterday at McQueen. They have a new principal there at McQueen, and it was great to go and interrupt, completely interrupt their classrooms. I had one group of kids that say, "What is this for? What are you guys doing?" But it was just great to be in there and have that energy, and then, yeah, no, say that in German. She knows German, so she could participate. I was walking around with a German English dictionary, which really wasn't that helpful, but anyway, made me look studious, if nothing else. I took a picture with it. But it was just great. Just kudos to all of the staff members that are working so hard, have worked so hard to open schools and get everybody ready. Just love it. One of the best days of the year. And that is, oh, superintendent's evaluation, just as a bit of a report, as all of us know, those surveys have gone out. We all got copies of them, and speaking with facilitators this morning. The intention is certainly, we can participate if we'd like. It will be thrown in with everybody else's. If not, no problem. Their main intention is for us to know what those survey questions were, so that as that information gets back to us, for us to utilize it, then certainly we can, so certainly don't feel pressure around that. Almost 50 community members so far as of yesterday had joined in. The surveys end on the 14th, so as you can remind people, certainly let's do that. And over 500 members of our staff, teachers and administrators and so on, have participated. So it's, from a timing wise, already better than what we had last year by a long shot. So timing wise, we know we're hitting it about right, putting it out when we've done that. So you'll hear talk a little bit more, just as it continues to go on, but I wanted to give just a little bit of an update. So so far, so good, and just remind people to fill out those surveys. All right, Superintendent Davis.
Great. Thank you, President Taylor. Of course, we talked about summer graduation already, new teachers, LTL, like all the things you've already discussed that we participated in. So it's been a truly busy, busy week, as we actually close out one year and start another one simultaneously. But I really want to thank all the employees in the district right now, all 8,000 employees, bus drivers, lunch facilities, like the buildings were spotless, deliveries on time, probably one of the most smoothest operating opening days the district has had. And a special thanks to my leadership team, because I know I probably can drive them crazy sometimes, but like, they covered every base, and we actually, for the first time, actually talked about celebrations in our opening meeting. Usually, it's always about troubleshooting problems. We actually went to celebrations, and a lot of kudos that principals provided back to us around the service in the department as we work on customer service for principals. So very grateful for that. Just to piggyback on Dr. Hilgerson's Nevada Promise, we did have a meeting. One of the things the district did, and you know, all know, each year we send out information to each high school kid about graduation data, where they are, what they need, and as a part of our discussion with her, we actually included to every high school senior the information around Nevada Promise, and how they could go get more information, to ensure that it wasn't just left up to the counselors telling them or something. So they actually have information in their hands. So we're excited about our continued partnership with TMCC. We had a very strong presence on social media, specifically our Facebook followers have increased in the past week. As of this morning, we actually are over 11,300 followers, which is really good. We had over 6,400 video viewings, and this is largely to the McQueen construction visit video. One of the things we talked about as a team is to be transparent with the public about the work, and they can actually go see that work. And we're trying to create a variety of videos, so they can see what that looks like. And I think our first video is when I started, you know, we had a really good hit, but it's just kind of, here's what we're doing. But somehow, the McQueen video like really took off, and so I am going to show that at the end. But we also had lots of hit on our bus safety video, and people sharing that out. So it's not just about construction, all the work that we're putting out to get out to our community. So kudos to the communications team. And I truly want to thank the board for our opening first day. We had a lot of fun, right? So it's not just that we're out, like we had fun talking to families, kids, as we engage together and engage separately, seeing. There was a lot of excitement and discussion about how people were actually happy. Like, it was a good thing for us to be out together, and a big thank you to our elected officials that showed up, and a big thank you to some of our community leaders. We don't always get a lot of the community people to come out, but we had a variety of community people who followed us for a pretty good portion of the day, so that was really amazing. So just wanted to say thank you to the board also for a great kickoff to a year, and we have a lot of work to do. We know that we are striving to be great. We're good, but there's a lot of things we have to do, so I'm hopeful that we have another successful year. And then I'd like to show the video. I think this video really is about not just the district, it's about parents, it's about community, it's about kids, it's about who we are and what our vision is for our district. Is this where I say turned on? Okay. While JJ is getting the sound prepared, some live Facebooks with the vice president and the president, so when I talk about, it's not just about the superintendent, it's all of us putting us out there as you go on visits. No sound? Video isn't good without the sound, this one.
Hello, everyone. Riley here with the Washoe County School District, again, checking out repairs and renovations going on at schools, thanks to passage of WC-1. We've been up on roofs, we've been outside, now we're here at McQueen High School. What they're doing is replacing about 44,000 square feet of carpet. About a quarter million dollar project. And I've actually got some special guests here with me again today. We have board president Angie Taylor, we have superintendent Tracy Davis, and we have some of the people that this work is really for. We've got an incoming freshman here, Kieran, and his dad, Dan, who I just, really just waylaid as they were registering for school. What's it like to come in and see that there is work going on right now to make the school better for you to start school?
If I were to like walk into a room that's kind of like dirty and smudges, or peeling carpet, it might make me question like other things about the school. But if I came in and it was nice and clean, I'd feel more comfortable with what's happening at the school.
It's good to know that the school that he's coming to, that there's money and funds available to do the repairs that are necessary for the kids to be able to come to school every day and have a nice environment to be in.
It was great to meet Kieran today, and he's an incoming freshman. And when I think about our driven goal of a 90% graduation rate, start talking to him, and not just about his academics, I'm like, okay, what do you like to do? What kind of clubs? What kind of sports? And he's going to be a soccer player? And just how we want to engage kids in the process, right? We understand how powerful and important the academic side of the house is, but also the relationship side to keep kids in school. It all comes together, everything that we dream of for our children, great buildings, great academics, great relationships, so that we can be one of the greatest districts in the United States.
You know, it's one thing when you're in a classroom, and if you look down, like this classroom is getting new carpet, right? So you look down, and your carpet's peeling or coming up. It doesn't send you the message as a student, I wouldn't think, that this is really that important. But otherwise, you're in a classroom, and things are tight, things are repaired, the environment such that you can comfortably focus on your learning, that creates a whole different atmosphere for you. It's all about the learning environment for the kids.
We've really got just one last group to hear from, so don't for a second think teachers don't work during the summer. We went and found a couple of them in their classrooms, prepping for students. So you've seen what these carpets and these floors looked like before. Now we're replacing about 44,000 square feet of what you walk on every day.
It kind of gives my room a fresh start. It's allowed me to make some changes to the design of the room, and make it feel more like mine than it did last year.
Well, I think the atmosphere of a classroom definitely affects students, students' academic outcomes. If they feel like they're in a warm, safe, secure environment.
And it really is true, the saying like, look good, feel good, because my room looks amazing right now. I'm literally obsessed with my carpet. Like, I love it so much. And I already, I feel good about this next year, because I have new carpet and I'm ready to go now because of it. So it feels awesome knowing that we're supported.
It's baseball time of year, right? In America, right? And everybody has a walk-up song, right? Think of your year from the beginning when you took the job, because you finished your first year, and to the point you are now. What would your walk-up song be?
If I had to come up with something off the top of my head, I'd say anything from guitar players like Joe Satriani or Jeff Beck.
This is going to show my youngness right here. But when I, and something new's about to happen, and I'm so excited, I play High School Musical, The Start of Something New, and I sing to it in my car. Now with every new thing that happens, that's what I play, because it's The Start of Something New.
Kendrick Lamar, Humble.
You know, you just need, you need pumped up music when you come to school, and when you leave, you need that, that take charge, feel good.
Excellent.
Okay, I'm just going to say, one of the great things about this video is that it actually was very organic, and when I was supposed to ask the question, it was actually going to be about academics. But we decided to have a little fun and just engaging with the teachers, and the whole thing was not even planned with the kid. It just kind of grew and became organic, and just to the teachers that were in that video, thank those teachers so much, because we had a really good time, and just a little insight about the work they do. So I hope we continue to all make videos and capture moments around our district and the good work.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Hello, we're there? We're good? All right, thanks Superintendent Davis. I'm still protesting, because Riley wouldn't let me wear my hard hat. Just saying. Just saying. All right, consent agenda. We're moving on now to agenda item three, 3.01. This is our consent agenda items 3.02 through 3.10. So entertain either a motion to approve, or if there's any item that a board member would like to pull out, or at least call any special attention to, we can do that at this time. Not to my knowledge, do we have any public comment? Nope.
Then I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion from trustee Holland, is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second, that the consent agenda is approved, item 3.02 through 3.10. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. We'll move on now to agenda item four. This agenda item, we go into some of our policies here, as we see the CFO moving into position. Discussion and preliminary approval of our proposed revision of Board Policy 3410. This is System of Accounts and Financial Oversight, with the revisions including inclusion of language related to financial oversight and audit, and the proposed deletion of Board Policy Number 3434, periodic audits. And this would, should it be approved, initiate, I believe it's a 15-day public review period? It says 13 here, but it's typically 15. I'm looking for Lisa Scurry, who isn't here, but it's 15, because that's what the policy says. So it's going to initiate the 15-day. It's 13 on this one?
NRS changed.
Oh, the NRS changed. Here's Lisa coming down the stairs, "I heard you, Ms. Scurry." So it's going to be a 13-day. Well, the advantage of that is then it comes back to us at the next meeting, as opposed to 15 days is a day after the next meeting, so. So thank you. So this will now initiate the 15-day. I mean, 13-day, excuse me, public review, yeah. 13, like Lisa said. 13-day public review period. And before us to walk us through it is Mr. Tom Szysinski, our CFO.
Thank you, President Taylor. Superintendent Davis, members of the board. Again, for the record, Tom Szysinski, Chief Financial Officer. And so we are looking at Board Policy 3410, and this is an opportunity for us to update and consolidate this with 3434. This particular policy deals with our system of accounts. And the system of accounts that we use for the school district are determined federally, and then we, as a state, adopt those. And the reason that's important for school districts is as they collect national data, we're using the same structure as a system of accounts, and it just makes it easier to collect that data and get those national comparisons that we like to do. So this board policy addresses that, and it also addresses our financial oversight process, which is the accountants that are in our office that are doing the periodic reviews of our accounts to make sure that things are going in an orderly fashion. The rest of the changes, I think, are relatively self-explanatory, so I won't bore you with all the individual details unless there's an individual question that I can answer for you.
Looking to my colleagues, are there any questions for Mr. Szysinski on this change? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion, if that's the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board of trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 3410, System of Accounts and Financial Oversight, and the proposed deletion of Board Policy 3434, periodic audits, and initiates 13-day public review period.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? We don't see any public comment for this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show, it is unanimous. And you stay right there, Tom, as we move on to agenda item 4.02. This is proposing the revision of Board Policy 9400, Financial Auditing of the School District. This is formerly Board Policy 9013. This includes, this proposed change includes expanded language related to the annual financial audit of the district, and this too would initiate, should it be approved, would initiate the 13-day public review period. As for possible action, again, Mr. Szysinski, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Taylor. Superintendent Davis, members of the board. Again, Tom Szysinski, Chief Financial Officer. And President Taylor pretty much said what I'm presenting here. So I think, again, the update of 9400, previously 9013, and all the changes as they relate to our financial auditing practices, to make sure that the board is update to our processes, and making sure we're in compliance with NRS, or going above NRS in some circumstances in terms of our protocols. So if there's any individual questions I can answer on this process, I'm here to do so.
Yes, Vice President Holland?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Tom. We did have a good discussion about both of these policies at the policy committee, and I appreciate that you've amended that it would be conducted by a certified public accountant, which, as you said, is more restrictive, and a higher level of really ensuring the public that we have the best possible professionals doing our audits. So thank you for making that amendment.
You're very welcome. For the nearly 26 years I've been here, we've always maintained a certified public accountant conducting the external audits that are conducted for the school district, and as you noted, this is a practice that's an above and beyond what NRS requires, and just a good practice for this board and for our community.
Thank you for pointing out that change, trustee Holland. Any other discussion, question for Mr. Szysinski, if he's here? We have no public comment on this either, so I will entertain a motion from the board, if that's the pleasure.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that board of trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 9400, Financial Auditing of the School District, formerly Board Policy 9013, initiates the 13-day public review period.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Right, the motion is carried. Let the record show, it is unanimous. And Tom, I know you still have a few more months with us, but we want to congratulate you on your, reluctantly, on your retirement, and just thank you for your 26 years of service you just did.
Well, in total, I've got 30 years in the system, so it's...
So really your 30 years of, in the system and just all the, all the hard work that your office has done all these years. And we really, really appreciate it and will, and will miss you, but certainly wish you well as you go to turn the page and go into this next chapter.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor and a pleasure to, to work for the school board, obviously for Superintendent Davis and the leadership team members. But the most important thing is the great honor to, to hand students their diplomas to, just whatever we do, it's all aligned towards getting the graduation rates up. And so I'm just very proud to be a part of that process. So thank you for that acknowledgement.
No, thank you, Tom. I know you still have a little bit more time, so we'll see you again.
Okay.
All right, Agenda Item 4.03. This is a discussion and preliminary approval. This is regarding everyone's favorite board policy, I like to call this one, 6111, School Calendars and Schedule Types to Relieve Overcrowding. And this includes some language, actually has initiated really by a couple of board members here, a couple of our colleagues. And we will hear from Dr. Deputy Kristen McNeil and the Chief of Staff, David Lasik. The floor is yours.
All right, good afternoon, members of the board. Superintendent Davis, David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record. Also with me, Deputy Superintendent Kristen McNeil. This is the bad penny policy, doesn't seem to go away, but it is back. So 6111, we took it to the Board Policy Committee last week. We had some language changes, thanks to two trustees, Frankel and Kelly, for helping out with that. And this removes the automatic conversion of a school to a multi-track calendar, once they hit 120% over enrollment, and allows for consideration of calendar changes, which may or may not include multi-track, should a, should a school reach 120% over their capacity. This was, like I mentioned, presented last week, and there were no changes, so we're bringing it for the board for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Lasik. Yes, Trustee Frankel?
I don't know if this is, is this on?
They'll catch up with you.
They'll catch up with me. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to, again, bring it back. And I appreciate the wording and the opportunity to make the changes. I know I have been quite vocal about this policy in the past and somewhat critical times, so I wanted to just convey my appreciation to both of you and also to my colleague to, to working on and being willing to amend this in this way. And for this reason, I'm going to move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 6111, School Calendars and Schedule Types to Relieve Overcrowding, and initiates the 13-day public review period.
Thank you, Trustee Frankel. I'm going to look to Trustee Kelly for a second.
Second.
Since it was initiated by the two of you. Any, any further discussion? Any questions for the staff on this? See no public comment? Oh, yes, we do see a question. Yes, Trustee Raymond?
This is a, just as a procedural, I guess, the Agenda Item states or defines the plan school and the, or the, what qualifies for a plan school and a watch school, was it? But that's, I couldn't find that in the actual policy. Is that, it's in the regulation?
Yeah, it's in the accompanying regulation.
You want to tell her what the, do you want to know what those are?
I know, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the policy meeting, and so I was trying to just.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Backtrack and figure it out when I, but I read the Agenda Item, I get it. I just wasn't sure where I was, where I was missing them in the policy, and now I know. Thank you.
Do you want the information on what constitutes a plan, a watch school?
It's in the Agenda. Is it, is it expanded in the regulation from what's on the Agenda Item?
It is, and we can provide that to you.
Okay.
Good question. You want to fill in the blank on that, so that's good. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor in the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show it is unanimous. And thank you for making, making that change and providing that flexibility. Thank you, Dr. McNeil. You added quite a lot to that presentation. Appreciate it. Onto Agenda Item 4.04. This is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Recommendation of the Group Insurance Committee of a 2% Increase in the.
President, you're supposed to wait for 4 o'clock on that one?
I'm sorry? Oh, yes, this item, it should be, because, yeah, right, and we, and I was the one who asked for that. So we have, oh, we have an hour. All righty, well, how about we have a recess? Because we've published that, and it should be here 4 o'clock. And if we have staff members that want to be a part of the discussion, then we certainly want to give them that opportunity to do so. And so we will have recess and reconvene at 4:00 PM, since that is our last Agenda Item. Thank you for.
President Taylor, President Taylor, I do have someone who'd like to speak at the ending public comment. Do you want to see if you would?
Would like to do that now? Absolutely, we can take that now, you bet.
Richard Daley?
Assemblyman Daley, thank you for being here, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, because I don't know if I would have been able to stay for four and then come back.
Oh, come on.
So, anyway, Richard Daley, I go by skip for the record. I'm here on behalf of the Laborers Union today. And I'm here to try to give the, the board, give them, recognize, give them credit for past, present, and I hope future support for local businesses. I know you guys took some heat once over a dairy issue, but I think you made the right decisions then. So right now, because our local community supported WC1, as we just saw the video on a little bit ago, on the ballot to raise local sales taxes, the Washington School District is in the process of choosing a contractor to build a new high school. So I'm here to let you know that myself and others believe that our local contractors are as good, in fact, I would argue better, suited to build a high school in the local area than any of the other out-of-state contractors buying for this project. Large out-of-state contractors start circling whenever they see a large project like this come along. And far too often, what I see is there's a tendency to say, "Oh, look at this shiny new object over here," and they think they got a better plan. And I'm telling you that, that is not the case. Our contractors are perfectly capable in doing that, but to build, to build this project. Now, sometimes we have disagreements on what a local contractor is or isn't, which is neither here nor there, but there are a couple of big tells. Number one, if you're looking to find out if a guy's really local here, you'll find out and ask him if he participates in a state-approved apprenticeship program, recognized by the state of Nevada. Virtually, all of the building trade geniuses have an apprenticeship program. We invest millions of dollars every year in that training. We're in the education business at some level, the same as the rest of you. And so that would be a big tell if I was asking on, are you a local contractor or not? And then, do those contractors hire local skilled workers? Do they have access to the iron ore? Are they a suitcase contractor, come in and really don't build anything, they just come in and take the profits, go back home? So I'm hoping, and I'm here to let you know, on my, my behalf and a lot of other taxpayers, that we're hoping for and expecting local employers and local workers to benefit from these types of projects that we voted for on WC1. I know I reached out, separate issue to several of you about this construction manager at risk process, it's a different process. I know you rely on your experts with the school district about that. But there are other people that are experts in that as well, and I just wanted to share some of that. I'm not trying to say or tear down the process, I just want to give you the view, a fuller perspective of, of how C-MARL works, Construction Manager at Risk. So that was it. I reached out to some of you, I've heard back from some of you. The ones I haven't, I'm hoping I will soon. I won't name any names, they know who they are. So I appreciate it, and my three minutes are up apparently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman Daley. We appreciate you being here. JG, do we have any others that we can give an opportunity at this time?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. We can't, we can do five, no, we can do 5.01, the future Agenda Items at this time as well? Do we have any, you mentioned something, Trustee Frankel, that you wanted?
Yes, thank you, President Taylor. I, I'm not sure exactly how to word it, but I, and I imagine we had, we had one coming, but I think it would be important for us to have as a future Agenda Item, a discussion of the status of, and where we are and the, and the plans for implementation of the many legislative changes that came down from the last legislative session. And I know we've had those reports in the past, and I think what I'm looking for is something a little bit more detailed in terms of the timelines, just to kind of see, because there's a lot of questions raised and a lot of obligations that we have, so I, to oversee and to make sure that they're happening. So just want to suggest that we have that Agenda Item brought as, as soon as, as appropriate, and the staff is ready to present it, but I'm eager to hear it.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Yes, Trustee Holland?
If I might, if I might piggyback onto that, Trustee Frankel and I, at the Legislative Conference, discussed the possibility of having that be like a quarterly item, so that we make sure there are some laws that take effect on July 1st, some take effect on January 1st. And if we could, at least twice a year, maybe four times a year, have a regular update on the status of the implementation of our compliance with new laws. And I know it's a lot of work, but we don't want to miss anything. And there are clearly some things that even as of yesterday, I don't know if we have them in place. Things like background checks for anyone that is working in a school as a volunteer, like parents who come to read to their children's class. We have some very severe new legislation affecting some of those things. So we want to, want to work on it quickly and then work on it regularly throughout the year if we can.
It certainly seems, because we have two different dates that you mentioned, when different things come in, it certainly seems appropriate to do that at least twice a year so that right before each of those come into play, we can monitor. You know, at, at a minimum, it would seem like that would, that would be appropriate. So future Agenda Items for ongoing. Okay, anything else? Other future Agenda Items on the mind of any of my colleagues at this time? Yes, Trustee Mayor?
Yes, I, I would like to have an update.
Can you just pull that mic down a little bit, sir? It's already on, though, that's the good news.
I'd, I'd like to have an update on traffic around the schools in light of what happened at Sted. Having taught at Sted Elementary School, I know back when, we're talking 40 years, it was a problem. And this girl was in the crosswalk, got hit. And I'd like to know how the city and the county and the school districts are adjusting traffic patterns and so forth around the schools, so that luckily this girl wasn't killed. But I, I think we ought to go in prevention mode and look at alternative routes to school for kids. Maybe they go down further away from a certain area or whatever, but that the traffic engineers that the cities and the counties have, and meet with our, our school district and try to nip this in the bud, because it's really dangerous. And I think that we've got to be proactive instead of reactive.
So traffic around schools, we'll have that as a future Agenda Item as well?
Yeah, update.
Update on?
And what we can do.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Mayor. Dr. Finster?
Yes, I, I'm interested in a survey, just, I mean, quick, down and dirty survey, with administrators about how they, and teachers, about how they feel about board members being in the school on the first day. It's just something I would like feedback on.
Is that an Agenda Item for us? How does that?
Yeah, I guess if, well, sure, because if you were to vote and say, "We want this survey," then it would give the superintendent guidance. I think it would be better to vote on it than to, because we don't want to get in the habit of one trustee.
Just as an Agenda Item, it would bring it forth as an action item.
As an action.
Okay.
That's what I think.
Okay, good. All right?
You know, nothing crazy, just something simple. Yes or no, maybe the second week of school? I'm just wondering.
So, so the Agenda Item will be a discussion around doing that survey?
Yeah, that you're doing.
Right. Okay. Any other Agenda Items, requests from our colleagues? This won't come back up again at the end of the meeting, because we're doing this Agenda Item now, so. Okay? All hearts and minds clear? Okay. All right, then we will come back. We'll reconvene at 4 o'clock to cover Agenda Item 4.04, and then we'll skip down to 5.02 public comment. Okay, we're in recess until 4:00 PM? All right, everyone, we will reconvene. Our meeting is at 4:00 PM. We're going to reconvene our meeting and jump right in at Agenda Item 4.04. Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Recommendation of the Group Insurance Committee of a 2% Increase in the Employee Contribution to the Group Health Insurance Rate and Benefit Changes Plan, Benefit Changes for Plan Year 2018. And before us is our, is our staff, Ms. Jackie James, Mr. Tom Szysinski, oh, he's back, and our Chief HR Officer, Don Huckabee. The floor is yours.
Oh, these chairs are nice.
Good afternoon.
Who do you have to know to get one of those?
Look at that, right?
Thank you so much, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. For the record, I'm Don Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer, and we're here to, today to discuss.
Don, if you will put that mic right in front of you, because as you turn, yeah.
Thank you. Discuss an increase to the employee contribution for our group health insurance and some related benefit changes in our plan for 2018. And then you two will share?
Yeah, we moved the mic.
Okay, thank you. As a little background for our discussion, Ms. Jackie James, our risk manager, has gone before the Insurance Committee many times this year to discuss the possible rate changes. Initially, Ms. James went to the Insurance Committee on May 4th to discuss the rate analysis, again on May 25th of this year, July 17th, and then on July 24th of this year. Initially, the plan was looking at over 6% increase in the premium rate. What then went before the committee was a 4.5% increase. The final recommendation from the Insurance Committee is a 2% increase. And so we will go through a little bit about that on our PowerPoint slide. I want to mention, as well as the increase, there were some plan changes put in effect in the recommendation from the Insurance Committee. And those changes were really to true up our EPO plan with our PPO plan. The intention is always for those to match, and so there were three changes that were recommended. The first was a change in the chiropractic care on the EPO side to match the PPO side to be 50 visits per year. There was a hearing aid benefit. On the EPO plan, it was a 70% coinsurance. The recommendation is an 80% coinsurance to match the PPO plan. And the third is skilled nursing days benefit. On the EPO plan, it was a 30-day limit. The recommendation is to match the PPO, which is 120-day limit per calendar year. So those changes and the 2% are what's before you today. We would like to give you a little information on this, and so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. James to talk to you about the rates.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. Go through, make sure I'm doing this correct. To give you just an idea of the number of lives that we have covered under the health insurance plan, we have over 6,800 active employees, 1,023 retirees, so 7,828. And of those retirees, we have employees and retirees with dependents, we have 2,526. So we do have over 10,000 lives that we are insuring on this plan. As Don had told you, the projected rate increase that we needed for 2018 was 4.5%, and that equates to $3.4 million. What was ultimately recommended by the Insurance Committee is a 2% rate increase, and that will equate to about $1,509,000 approximately. To give you an idea where the insurance trust fund balance has been, at the end of, well, at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th of 2016, we were a little over $12 million. And that was with the transfer of OPEB money of over $5 million in to help the, the fund balance. As of June 30th, 2017, we're getting close to $17 million. So the fund is, is doing a lot better. There were a lot of changes, as you may recall, that we implemented for this year, which led to the Insurance Committee making the 2% rate increase, because they wanted to see how these changes were gonna, were gonna produce for the rest of the year, deductible or copayment changes, and then implementing doctors-on-demand. There were a lot of things like that, so they wanted to see how that was gonna be for the rest of this year. On the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to our CFO and let him speak on that.
Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. For the record, Tom Szysinski, Chief Financial Officer. So this is a graphical history on the fund balance for the Health Insurance Fund, so I'll take you back to fiscal year 12, where you can see the orange line represents the recommended fund balance, and you can see the gray bars represent what the actual fund balance was. And so back in fiscal year '12, we had gained almost, or we had $38 million in our fund balance in our health insurance fund, significantly above the recommended level. But then from that period of time, it started to erode to a point down in fiscal year '16 where it was below the recommended level. These were during, you know, '12, '13, '14, still years where we, the fund was performing very well, but we were also utilizing premium holidays to help balance the budget. And, you know, so that's part of the decline in those years. And then, you know, obviously, it fell below the recommended level, so then we had, and then we had some bad experience years. My tenure here at the school district is, health insurance is volatile. It's, you got good claims years and you have bad claims years. One of the hardest funds to manage in the organization, but Jackie and Don and team do just a fantastic job working with our consultants, and our employee committee just does a fantastic job. So that's the history of '12 through '16. And then kind of moving forward, taking a look at the rates that Don and Jackie were speaking about. In fiscal year '17, we're at 16, we're forecast to be at 16.8 million. We're just finalizing our books with the recommended rate increase at 2%, or if we went at a more aggressive 4.5% versus the yellow line of doing 0%. From a fiscal, from an accountant's point of view, 0 is probably not recommended at all. We want to make sure that we continue to grow that fund balance, so 0 obviously leaves us at a dangerous level. 2% is much more comfortable, and 4.5 would be very aggressive, but we do need to take a look and see what these changes that have been recommended in the program are bringing about. So that kind of gives you a graphical presentation. So again, the red line, 2% recommended, is something that we're all comfortable with. Kind of looking at this from an OPEB point of view, we have another post-employment benefits program where we set aside money for future retirees in our program, and so we've had to start utilizing some of that starting in fiscal year '16. So again, for retiree costs, that's the only thing we can utilize that fund for. We have utilized $5 million in fiscal year '16 and '17, and we plan to do so in '18. But we'll have to continue to monitor our OPEB fund because as we know, as we balance the district's budget, we've slowed down some of our contributions there. So that's going to be a challenge for us as an organization moving forward to get back to trying to make those contributions into that OPEB trust fund. Again, the volatility of a health insurance fund, you have to make sure and see what claims look like this year. So 2% could be a perfect solution for this year, and we'll see what it looks like next year. Or things could be, we could have a bad claims year, not going to know for another year. So that's my analysis, and I don't know who's taking over next.
So one thing I think it's important to keep in mind, we're very proud of the fact that we're doing much better in our insurance trust fund this year. We do want to see what kind of benefits we reap as we move forward with the changes that we made, but we're not out of the woods yet. So I think it's very important that we know that while it's better, it's not great yet. We're still going to have to be very diligent in what we're doing, still really watching our costs. We're going to continue to look for other avenues for savings as we always do. The use of the OPEB, which is what OPEB is there for, that's great, but we cannot continue to just take from the OPEB fund in order to keep our insurance fund balanced. So that's not sustainable as we move forward. We've been fortunate to be able to do so thus far, but it's not something that we could sustain moving forward. Next, we had prepared just a quick timeline, and Don had kind of already alluded to it as to when this information was taken before the insurance committee. We've been trying to start earlier and earlier, just because I know these are such hard decisions, and also I wanted to make sure that they have time to get it back to their respective associations and have those valuable discussions with their members as well. So we did start this at the beginning of May, and did have special meetings through the summer, which is also a difficult time because they are giving of their time during their break, and so I know how important that is. And so we were trying to work with them so that we can get this before the board at the beginning of August. So as Tom had also spoke to, the options before the insurance committee were no rate or benefit changes, 4.5% rate and/or benefit changes, and then the 2% rate and benefit changes, which is what the insurance committee ultimately is recommending. The next few screens just are kind of giving you an idea of what this 2% is going to mean for the respective people so, that are on the PPO, the EPO, and the high deductible. We have so many plans. And then the rate increase for the retirees as well. So we just wanted to list those out, and as you could see, on the EPO and the PPO, we listed out all the different pay categories just so that everyone could, so any staff that were looking at it could kind of see what that was going to mean for them as well. Our next steps, just wanted to inform the board, so on our next steps, we are going to work on continuing our informational and educational sessions that we had started last year when we rolled out the high deductible health plan. We had implemented these and went out to the various sites and held these kind of sessions, just to inform people, to discuss what their benefits were, to explain what being self-insured is, because a lot of our staff don't understand that and don't know what that means. So we got out before them, and we're going to continue that. Also this year, going to work with retirees and have some informational sessions and work with them on various different things about Medicare and everything else. So going to continue that. We're working on our open enrollment packets. Those are really thick packets, if any of you have seen those, so those have to be updated every year. So we're starting to work on that because we have to get those to print so that open enrollment can begin September 16th. We're going to kick off open enrollment this year with our health fair, so we will have representatives there for anyone who wants to meet with them immediately. We're also, during the open enrollment process, which will end November 11th, we are this year also implementing some Saturday meetings that they can sign up for because that's a lot of the feedback we've heard from members is that they aren't able to get away from school during the day or from their work site during the day. And then evenings are usually with family obligations, and so this way, if we have Saturday appointments available, we're hoping that we can accommodate a lot more people and make it easier for staff. And then just kind of the logistics of file transfers and audits and everything else that has to be done so that ultimately we can get those confirmation letters out, and then we can get the health insurance cards out, all before the first of the year, which is always our goal. And I'm praying, praying this year that we meet that deadline. So that's all that I have, and I guess, is there any questions?
Yes, trustee Simon Holland?
Thank you, Madam Perez. Thank you for the great presentation and the excellent information. I think you've really provided us a full picture of things. I very much appreciated the detail on how much this impacts individuals because I know that's certainly an important thing we need to take into consideration. Mr. Szysinski, for you, what is our outstanding OPEB liability, our other post-employment benefit liability roughly?
It's substantial. It's like $100 million. I don't have the exact number. We're just getting the updated actuarial report, but it's significant. So, yeah.
And just to explain how that works, the OPEB trust fund and our liability, if we could just kind of talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
Because I know, I know we have to, we have to fund our ARC, the annual required contribution, and then there's, when times are good, we have the opportunity to put more in, but.
Right.
Whether we're able to is another story.
Yeah, I'll do my best. So the OPEB trust fund, again, is, I call it the past, present, and the future. So it's past employees that we have, current employees have, and future employees that we'll have. And so we're trying to set aside funds for future liabilities. And so we work with an actuary that gives us what our overall liability is, and I apologize, I didn't have that number for this evening.
That's okay.
But I can certainly get that for you. And then we have what's required, an annual required contribution. Well, we were aggressive in some of the initial years, overfunded our ARC, and that's actually a good thing because it allowed us to back off on some of those contributions in these more recent years so that we could, you know, help us with our other budgetary requirements. The requirements under Governmental Accounting Standards Board states that if you fund your ARC, then you don't have to report the, that overall larger liability, the AAL, as it's referred to, on your financial statements. However, new GASBs are coming along, even if you fully fund your ARC or your annual required contribution, I don't want to get in trouble for using that acronym, that even if you fully fund your ARC, you're going to have to now start reporting the full liability as well, just like now we're reporting the PERS pension liability, completely separate, but we're now reporting all of those liabilities. So when you look at our overall financial statements, just as the entity taken as a whole, it looks like we have a huge negative balance because we're reporting both PERS pension liabilities and health insurance OPEB liabilities on our financial statements. So, but those are the responsibilities of all governments because these are pension programs and health insurance programs are part of our package, and so you have to be transparent to the public and present a full picture of what your, what your full costs are, even if they're future costs.
So that's part of, if I might, Madam President, so that's, that's part of our thinking about this because it's not just this next year that we have to be thinking about. As you said, the volatility of our health insurance claims. We can never predict what they might be, and so one, one strategy is to be overly cautious to make sure that we're putting our nuts away for the winter when, when times are not so good. So I know that's part of the thinking, and that's part of the, that was part of the 4.5% versus 0 versus 2%. We have to think long-term and sustainability of our, of our funds.
Very much agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Holland. Trustee Franco?
Thank you, President Taylor. And sort of to piggyback on that, looking at the slide, and I don't, it's the one that's got the gray bars and the three different lines based on the 0, 2, and 4.5. When I look at that, I know we go two years into, or three years into the future, and I know, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, and that's part of the challenges, anticipating or not, you know, not knowing exactly what will happen. And I know that's part of what you're suggesting with the 2% is that we, we, you're suggesting 2% so that we can see how it continues to adjust going forward. Just looking at this, I know the, the blue line for 4.5, you know, it goes, starts to go up, which is great, that's what we want to see. The red line goes down, but it doesn't go down as significantly between 19 and 20. What's your sense of what might happen after 20? I mean, is, is the goal eventually to hope if we stay with that, we can continue to, we can see it start to tip upward? What's your thought on that, Tom? I know you don't have a crystal ball.
Sure. That's a great question, trustee Franco. So I think when we sat with you this time last year, the fund was in a little bit more difficult position, and so we kind of put together a three-year plan. And so last year, we worked with the employee committee and came up with a 7% rate increase in which the committee made some alterations to some of the benefits because we really were asking for 10%, if you remember back to this time last year, for those that were on the board at that time. And so, you know, obviously, fast forward one year, and the fund had just an outstanding claims year, so that's, that's a real plus. OPEB's still helping out. The crystal ball is, I mean, I think Jackie and team worked very hard. We've got an outstanding wellness program, so I think, you know, we'll work very hard to try and keep claims down. Hopefully, we're sitting here a year from now, I may not be, but different discussion. But, you know, hopefully, things will go well. I mean, claims are claims at the end of the day, so I think, again, 0, obviously, the reason for this slide with 0 is not a very good option. You know, as an accountant, sure, I'd like to have the higher ones, but we've got to also think about our employees' needs as well. And so I think, again, 2% is a good compromise, the district working with our employees saying, you know, 2% could be fine, but it may not be, so we could be sitting here this time next year and maybe have to do a higher rate increase. But I think 2% is a very reasonable level. Let's let it play out and, and, you know, take a look at it this time next year.
And I also want to just also make another comment in looking at the timeline, and I appreciated everything that you described, Jackie. I know last year at this time, we talked about adjusting the timeline a little bit, even though it's difficult for the committee members during the summer, just in terms of providing notice to the employees and time for us to get the information that we needed. So I want to thank you for making those adjustments and all the efforts around communication with employees, and also thank the committee members for taking that time during the summer months to do this hard work. So I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Yes, trustee, thank you, trustee Franco. Trustee mayor?
When does the increase take effect, and is that coming out of their negotiated agreements, or is it going to be taken out of their pay?
So the rates will go into effect in January of 18.
First of January?
Yes. Yes, and so that's when it will take effect, and it will be deducted from their paycheck. So their premiums are deducted from their paycheck for dependents.
And on the timeline, you had that you'd notify them in time, and then they have to sign and they have to get cards?
Right. They'll have insurance cards for next year. Everyone will.
Last year was a, I got more calls that they didn't get their cards. Is, you're supposed to get it this time on time?
Great point. That's why we really wanted to try to get this done in August so that we have everything in place and we're not rushing, which is what kind of happened last year. And we did have many members who didn't have their cards by the first of the year. Our hope is that for this year, everyone will have their cards by the first of the year.
But some of our preferred providers made allowances for people that didn't have their new cards. They let them use their old cards, and we should thank those providers that did that as a courtesy, because people call me in tears, "I don't have my card, what do I do?" But they, providers kind of, not all of them, I guess.
Absolutely.
But majority, their old one was just as good.
Yeah, Jackie, you can speak to that a little more.
Yeah, and just, just so that everyone knows, there is an app, Hometown Health has an app where you can have your card online.
Wow.
And so that you can have it wherever you go, and you don't have to necessarily carry it with you. But if at any time you don't have access or you can't figure it out or pull it up, you can always contact Hometown Health, and they can, they can give you that information. So you don't necessarily have to have the physical card in the mail to be able to have your card with you.
Great.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Perez.
Thank you, trustee mayor. I just wanted to, one, to certainly join trustee Franco, as she mentioned, we just thank the insurance committee. We know that's, that's a lot of hard work, and their work comes up every year because every year there's something to look at, and it's one of those things that sometimes isn't the most popular work. So certainly, please give them our appreciation. And I want to thank the staff, the things that you did to improve upon, just things that we learned last year. I mean, the improved timeline, as we talked about, to take care of those cards, I made a couple notes here, reaching out to retirees and giving them more of an opportunity to be made aware of what's going on, and then even Saturdays, so people can come in. I mean, just all of those extra efforts, just give the employees more of an opportunity, you know, to stay in touch and to stay on top of things. So I just want to acknowledge those things as we learn, sometimes we learn some things, but the most important thing is to do something about it, and you've done that. So I really want to commend you, Jackie, and your team, and Don and such, to, just to thank them. I know that's a lot of hard work, and so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
That, yes, trustee Holland?
Since we're talking about healthcare, I know, again, we don't have a crystal ball, but are there any proposals that are being talked about at the national level that would impact any of our, of our decision today?
Not that I'm aware of. There, there's so much uncertainty, and, you know, the only thing that seems to be certain is the cost of healthcare is going up and up and up. So I feel that this year, we've been extremely fortunate here at the district to see a little change in our fund that we have. It's been in a positive movement, so, but on the national level, we haven't. It just seems that what I am hearing as far as the increases in the health insurance rates, it's still going up.
Thank you, Jackie.
And I'll just echo what Dr. Taylor said about, just thank you. We don't know what we don't know, and last year was like bumpy roads, and you guys really did a good job of just bringing the information back in time so that we could bring it out to the board and not be in a situation where we're in last year. So kudos to the team.
Thank you.
We do, we do have public comment on this. JJ?
Natha Anderson.
Ms. Anderson, welcome. Yeah, if you, no, Tom's making room for you here. Natha, come on up.
She's retiring.
Already kicking you out, Tom. See how that is?
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Natha Anderson. I'm here representing the Washoe Education Association, as well as our sister union, the Washoe Education Support Professionals, because we work very closely together, and unfortunately, Melissa wasn't able to be here today. We just want to also thank you very much, President Taylor, for allowing us this time to speak. But we also wanted to thank the committee and Jackie for all the work that they did. We realize that this, a 0 would be awesome, but we also realize that's not realistic. And so we would just ask for your support of that compromise of the 2%. Our employees are covered by the district based upon our collective bargain agreement, if our dependents are not, and they desperately need that help, especially our WSP members. And so I just wanted to bring that up and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Are there any other? Is there any other, other public comment?
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back here to the table. Any other questions or comments, or if not, I will entertain a motion, if that's the pleasure of the board? This is usually when somebody makes a motion.
[laughing]
Typically, most meetings.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Group Insurance Committee of a 2% increase in the employee contribution to the group health insurance rate and benefit changes for Plan Year 2018.
Thank you, Trustee Remy. Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion from the table? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried, let the record show that it is unanimous, so there'll be a 2% increase for dependents, not for employees, but for dependents. Again, thank you so much for your work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, moving on to, we've already done Agenda Item 4.05 was pulled, we've done 4.05, so, any final public comment, JJ?
I have none.
Seeing none? Then the fin, yes, the, the next meeting, the, the next meeting is our, our work session on the 19th, and that location, I believe, is out at the Galena Campus of TMCC, it's right here. I'm looking, it's right here.
Upstairs.
Upstairs, oh, that's where it is, upstairs. Upstairs, and then our next board meeting is back in the boardroom with new technology, which will hopefully allow the public to engage even, at an even greater way, in the boardroom on the 22nd. Superintendent Davis?
Yes, on the 18th, there is going to be a soccer game with the Youth Soccer League and some elected officials and myself. I'll be the goalie, and I will be signing some of the elected officials up to give me a break in the
Hip replacement.
Thank you.
Terrible hip replacement.
Put that on your calendars for the 18th. It'd be worth it just to see her out there, I think, so. All right, seeing no other business, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff, for getting this all set up out here?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
I'm coming in.
9:22.